Let's rise for a moment of silence.
During this moment of silence, I'd like everybody to remember John Morrell, who was a school board member who recently passed away.
Salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We didn't have any meeting last week, so there's no real change. Our next meeting is May 15th at 5:00 p.m. right here in this room.
Agenda will be posted tomorrow?
Yeah, I believe so. Agenda posted tomorrow.
Any changes of the student handbooks discussion?
No. Administration, anything that will be changed, we'll make sure we announce before the end of the school year. Handbook, the process with the handbooks is they don't get printed until July. So usually they're working on those changes with a committee of teachers in June. But any of those changes, I made sure that we have those go out to the parents prior to the end of the year. Clear book bag, this stuff just no longer exists.
Anything from the afternoon meeting?
No. Budget.
Yeah. Stand right up. May I sit here?
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Yes, yes, yes.
Everybody remembers Jim Maravelli?
Please leave everyone.
Steve, is there any way to put this up on that as well?
Probably either, Tom. I'll send you a copy here. Good evening, everyone. Jim Maravelli from School Business Consultants. And here to give you a bit of a budget update, kind of walk through, to give you a little context as to where we stand, where we've been, kind of give you a little context leading up to the 24-25 preliminary budget, which is on your agenda tonight to vote on. So first, let's talk about tonight's agenda. You can advance that slide. I want to talk about the budget timeline. I want to provide some historical financial data that we've extracted from the Forecast 5 software that the district has invested in, very powerful tool, to give you some trends and analytics that you can take a look at. Also want to give you some 23-24 year-to-date results and where I think you might end up this year. And then finally, I wanted to give you a quick overview of the 24-25 preliminary budget. Next slide. So the timeline that we have before us, we actually started this timeline back in January past the Act 1 index resolution. That simply said that the board will not raise taxes above the index set by PDE, which is 7.4%. That does not mean that the board is raising taxes to 7.4%. That means they can do anything between 0 and 7.4%. The preliminary budget discussion is tonight, and you'll have to vote on that because you need 30 days' notice to make the budget available to the public prior to final budget passage in June. So the final budget must be passed by June 30th each year. For not like the Fed, we can't do the continuing resolutions. We have to pass our budget on time. Next slide. Whenever I'm talking budget, schools are in the people business, the education of people business. So enrollment is an important component to give context to any financial discussion that you might have. As you can see here, this is Berwick's enrollment history from 2011 to 2023. We are down about 349 students, which is an 11.5% decline in student enrollment over that time. You can also see the red line there is the special education population. You can see that is rising slightly over time as the overall population is decreasing. Next slide. So this graph is one I like to share, and this shows how your FTEs, your full-time employees or full-time equivalents, keep pace with enrollment. So if you see enrollment decline, as we have here in Berwick, you would expect that the number of FTEs necessary to educate those children would also decrease. And what you see here is that as enrollment has gone down, Berwick has reduced the size of their staff over time, commensurate roughly about 12 to 12.5%. So they've been prudent in trimming staff through attrition, I believe, over that time to match it up with student enrollment. So if you go to the next slide, we'll start talking about expenses, and we can go to the next one again. Talking about spending by category. So this is an important one to create some perspective. So the large blue portion of the graph, 47% of it, is salaries. That orange portion of 30% is benefits. So salary and benefits equate to 77% of Berwick's general fund budget. And I took this as an average over the last decade. So that is a long period of time to determine these percentages. So when you take that 77%, and then you add in the purchased services, such as charter school tuition, special education placements, transportation, legal audit, subcontracting service of any time, you're now up to 95% of your budget already, before you even get into debt payments that you make. So there's very little, much of your budget is fixed here. Sure, you can negotiate contracts, and you can look for better deals, and you can look to trim in different places. But overall, there are a lot of obligations that a school has to make, and largely, the budget is quite fixed in terms of staffing and services that are required. Take a look at the next slide. This slide tells a story of spending efficiently, might be one way to describe it. You can see the line at the bottom is Berwick. This is a per-student spending analysis. This is kind of a powerful way that you can compare any two schools in the state of Pennsylvania. You take simply your expenditures, and you divide it by your enrollment, and you come up with a per-student amount. And that allows you to, as we can see here, we can compare to other districts in the state and in CSIU 16. So when we compare the trend in spending against CSIU 16, we see that we spend $1,411 less than the other districts in our intermediate unit. And compared to the average of the state of Pennsylvania, Berwick spends $2,283 less than the average of all districts in Pennsylvania. That spending level per pupil ranks 365 out of 499 districts. Onto the next slide. I wanted to show this sort of, it's called the expense performance budget. And I wanted to show this as just kind of a cautionary item in terms of how we budget. So what we see here is a budget versus actual, year over year over year. And you see, in between each pair of bars, you see a diagonal line connecting the two. And what that shows is spending greater than the budget in those years that you see the line kind of going up. Now, many of those years, there was probably a project of some kind going on, particularly in 2019. You see there's significantly, a significant overage there. But normally, we like to see, you come in at even with spending, we're a little bit below. But this is a way, if you continually do this, is a way that you can run out of fund balance if we continue to overspend on that. Now, this chart ends in 2022. 2023, you did come in under budget. In 2024, we'll talk about it a little bit. We do expect that to happen again. So that trend seems to be reversing, but just a cautionary slide to take a look at there. Next slide. This is your spending overall, and it looks choppy, this trend. Kind of ups and downs. And the ups and downs are caused by projects that are done over the years. And they're done through general fund. If you take a borrowing, your auditors will make you record the expense in your general fund. So what I like to do is, on the next slide, I like to trim out those expenses so you get a better look at what the trend looks like here. The two large pieces at the bottom, in blue is salaries, orange is benefits. That's your 77% of your budget right there. And then the other large chunks there are your services. In the next slide, I want to talk a little bit more specifically about salary and benefits. This slide shows, as you can see, the blue bar, salaries, kind of stays pretty stagnant over time. And that's not because you're not giving people raises. That's because you have less people overall in the district to pay. Okay? So that has stayed pretty stagnant. So salaries over this time period have increased by 8.5%. However, over the same time period, health insurance has increased by 30%, which actually, considering what I'm seeing in some other schools, is not a terrible number over that time span. But it's still a staggering amount on what used to be one of your top budget line items, until it was surpassed by PISERS. PISERS is the red bar that grows very quickly, and it has increased by 203% over this time period. PISERS used to be somewhere close to 0% in terms of dollars expended on salary. Now it is 34% of every dollar in salary that goes out the door. You pay an additional 34 cents. The state kicks back half of that. So there is a reimbursement there, but it is a very significant cost and quite a budget burden. Another budget burden on the next slide are charter schools.
PISERS is what?
PISERS is the Pennsylvania State Employee Retirement System. And we are mandated to contribute to all employees who qualify. The next slide is tuition paid to charter and predominantly cyber charter schools. You can see a pretty staggering increase there to the $2 million level, just as COVID began. And you saw that some kids came back in 2021, '22, and then we sort of regressed back in 2023. So that's kind of what we're seeing in other schools. We're seeing this trend, the cost is kind of sticky. So that's about $2 million out of your budget that you really don't have a say in unless these kids come back. So that's a challenge kind of faced across the board. As well as, the next slide is the challenge that we're seeing everywhere, is that's special education expenses. Now, this line, just because of scale, looks pretty smooth. But it is actually, over this 12-year time period, we've seen special ed costs go up 43% over this 12-year time period. So very challenging to control costs in this area. I do know, based on the discussions I've been hearing internally, they do work very hard, your administration works very hard to try to come up with creative solutions to keep those costs down and placements. But there are always a lot of options in this area, and it is a costly one. So we can move on to revenues? Sorry, if I'm being too quickly slowing you down, I'm just trying to respect everyone's time. I have a lot to cover. So taking a look at your revenues by category. We have our state revenues are actually the largest category here at Berwick. State revenues include your basic education subsidy, special ed subsidy, transportation, and that PISERS reimbursement that I was talking about. Locally, you're funded mostly by property taxes, earned income taxes, and now a bigger line item that didn't used to be so big, interest earnings this year. And rates are up. And then other local taxes that some would refer to as nuisance taxes, $50, $52 occupational tax, things like that. So I want to take a minute on the next slide. So we talked about spending per student. You can also do the same exercise with revenue per student. In 2022, the average revenue per student was $21,110. That's statewide. Berwick area took in $16,487 per student. That's $4,623, or 22% less than the average in PA. I don't mean to read off the slide, but I think those are really impactful numbers. In terms of revenue per student, you rank 469 out of 499. So you have very limited resources here at Berwick as you take in among the very least revenue per student of any district in the Commonwealth. So that is a challenge, and that's a combination of state, local, and federal funds. So that is, so you are doing more with less, so to speak. Next slide. Taking a look at the real estate tax collection history. In the green, we have current real estate taxes. In the red are your delinquent real estate taxes. And this trend, you can kind of see, I think it looks like 2017, there might have been a tax decrease at a certain point in time. That's where the revenue dips, and then it sort of recovers as the rate goes up over time. I do want to mention, working through your budget, the estimate, you have a multi-county situation, so the taxes are a little bit complex. We did see the last two years where whoever prepared the budget estimated taxable and non-taxable properties in the calculation. As such, you were expecting more revenue than you actually got. So on our last call, when we talked to the board, there was about an $800,000 negative variance in real estate taxes, and we were investigating why we didn't collect that. And part of it was a collection rate that was a little too high, we think. And the other part of it was that they were trying to calculate taxes off of taxable and non-taxable. In other words, nonprofit government organizations that were never going to pay the taxes. So we were working with PDE between now and your final budget passage to make sure that we get this correct, get the trend started again correctly, because there is some nuance between the two counties that we really need this to be right. So Joe from School Business Consultants and myself are working with PDE to make sure we get this right. Fortunately, no harm, no foul on that. I don't, you know, it's not like there was any money or anything in this thing. It was just an estimate that was not calculated properly, and we're working to rectify that. Earned income taxes on the next slide. So this one looks like quite a roller coaster ride. I suspect this has to do more with timing of payments coming in. So I don't think you really went that far up and that far down each year. I think you had a pretty distinct downward trend for about five years, and now you're seeing a pretty distinct upward trend for about five years. So that led us to evaluate the historical data. And as you'll see, we did increase the estimate for next year's budget, which helped you out in that regard here. So earned income taxes are trending in a positive direction. Onto the next slide. Here are your earnings on investments. You can see, most years on this graph, we were not even clearing $100,000 in earnings. But in 2023, we made about a half a million dollars. This year, if you look at your financial report through March, we, I believe, brought in about $700,000 already. So the rates are good. The administration did a good job negotiating rates and working with the local banks to maximize interest earnings. And you can see that you're now funding a few positions there with some pretty significant earnings on investments. And we look for that to continue next year. One thing I will note, you may want to start looking to protect yourself and maintain those interest rates in possibly like a CD or even a US Treasury, something like that, just in case rates were to suddenly drop. That would be a revenue source you would not want to lose overnight. So just a thought. Onto the state revenue. This is kind of what the breakdown is. Pretty flat through this time period. However, with some of the level-up funding that came in in prior year and then what is proposed this year, we really hope to see an improvement there for Berwick. Onto federal. Just quickly take a look. You can see, very flat. You kind of stay in the 1.3, 1.4 million range, and then we have an anomaly with some stimulus funds rolling in. Stimulus funds are expiring at the end of this year. They will not be available for you. What I mean by expiring, I mean they will all be used by the end of this fiscal year. But they won't be available in '24, '25, so you won't see that in the budget. Next slide. So, that looks a little light. The fund balance isn't even really showing up there. Is there a line at the bottom?
There is.
Not on there. Well, this was showing how you were matching revenues and expenses and the impact on the fund balance. And there was sort of an increase in fund balance from years like 2011 through, if I recall, 2018, and then it started to taper off and decrease. At '22, we got to about $4 million, if I'm remembering correctly. And at 630, '23, we're at about the $5 million level. So you have a healthy fund balance there. I apologize if this graph isn't displaying correctly, but we'll move on to the next one rather than have me explain it. Next one. So here's what I'm seeing in the current year. This is how you're doing this year. You're expected to receive $1.6 million more than budgeted in basic ed subsidy. In other words, this was enacted and signed by the governor. You can expect to receive that much more than you budgeted in revenue, $1.6 million. So you're conservative on that line item, and will come into the good there. Through March, I noted that you're collecting $700,000 more than you budgeted so far in interest earnings. So that is a good indicator that you're going to come out with a positive financial result. And then also, there was some catch-up payments on some building reimbursement subsidies. Now, this is one time, $1.8 million more than budgeted. On the expense side of things, salaries, I'm seeing tracking between 1 and 2% below budget through March. That's a positive trend. Most line items appear to be tracking at or below budget. That's what we'd like to see. There doesn't seem to be any anomalies there. And then I'll just leave open that final orders for the stimulus funds will impact the expense forecast. But my point here is, on the next slide, you begin the year with a $54.8 million in revenue and $54.8 million in expenses, which is a balanced budget. So you don't actually see that too often. Most districts start out with a deficit. So you started with a balanced budget, and it only got better from there. The three revenues I discussed on the prior slide are tracking $4.42 billion better than budget. Real estate taxes came in about $100,000 below budget because of that error we were talking about. And the expenses are trending as you would expect. So I'll let you infer what the financial results may be. I did include a detailed report in your board packet so you can see those line items that I'm talking about. So hopefully that will help. And then on to the 24-25 preliminary budget. So this is a high-level summary of what last year's revenues looked like versus this year's, and I'm showing the variances. Okay? So you see local revenues up 6.6%, state revenues up 11.3%. That state revenue is largely a catch-up of the current year increase with a modest conservative increase year-over-year. And then federally, you see, it's down 74.7%, largely because of the expiration of SER 3. Couple notes on that on the next slide. In this budget, we proposed, just for your consideration, there's a 4% increase included in this on real estate taxes, for your consideration. So that does not mean if you approve that tonight, you have to do exactly that. There is a recommendation. We did see budgetary deficit and some pressures there. So we came in with a 4% increase, just for consideration. And there is the amount of revenue that would be generated at each level from 1% to 7.4%. Again, this will all be made public for you after this presentation is over, but those are the different levels of revenue that you can raise up to the index. Next slide, just a few notes on those things. Again, there's the 4% proposal. Earned income tax trend, we boosted it by $600,000 because we're really seeing that trend picking up steam. Real estate transfer tax, we adjusted to trend, $50,000 more. Earnings on investment, we had to move that up to market, $650,000 more expected. Basic ed subsidy, we budgeted 3%, and we think we'll hit that. But the governor's proposing an 8% increase for Berwick, and that would be $1.7 million. And that would be, if that full 1.7 came in, we're not recommending anybody budget for this because it's like a best-case scenario. But if that came in, you would get $875,000 more help than what we're budgeting for. So unfortunately, I don't think you're going to know what the state's going to give you until after you vote on your budget first. Transportation subsidy, we acknowledge the cost increase on the transportation side and reimbursement, and we adjusted that to trend. And then, good news, is the state tax reduction allocation. This doesn't go to you. This gets passed through to the taxpayers. So any potential tax increase, you do, this $277,000 will be used to offset or partially offset that tax increase. So that's a pretty significant boost to that reduction allocation. And then, as I said, SER 3 will be going away at the end of this year. The next slide. On the expense side, so here's what we did. Because the salaries at this point are unknown, right? So the salaries, you can see, are basically flat in this budget. What we did was, we took everybody and moved them, just kind of status quo, moved them into next year. But what we did was, we didn't want to not budget for anything in the salary realm, so we went into the contingency in that service line item. You can see a very significant increase there. And we budgeted for what we think the market rate is right now, and again, has no implication on anything other than just an educated guess, for salary, PISERS, FICA increases there. So there is a contingency in your budget for it. It's just not allocated to the salary and benefit line item right now. The benefit to that is, you know, we can move it in if you come to an agreement with the different labor groups. Or if it doesn't get done before June 30th, the ancillary benefit difference is, the way the charter schools get paid is based on your budget. So if you inflate budget line items, you inflate the tuition rate for the charter schools. Does that make sense? So we've budgeted it this way. We wanted to account for it. You have to be honest about it. You know, people, obviously, people, their salaries go up over time, so you have to account for it. You can't just ignore that. You can't just ignore that. So that's what we see there. The benefit line item, that's largely that increase is largely driven by, I believe it was an 8.5% increase in health insurance. So that was a pretty significant cost there. Almost a half million dollars, I believe, was the cost decrease there. But overall, things are pretty much, you know, flat, staying in line with where they were. Some stimulus-related one-time costs came off. And I believe that's all the expense items that I had, so you can skip the next. And move to the next one. There we go. So overall, we are looking at 54.9 million dollars in revenue and 55.4 million dollars in expenses. So you do have a deficit in this budget preliminarily of 442,000 dollars. So the next steps, how do we deal with that? Next steps are, you know, we monitor financial information, and we make changes as data becomes available. If we get better news coming from the state, we reflect that change accordingly. If we get, you know, whether good news or bad, as the information rolls in, we make the changes in the budget between now and June. All right? It's this continual updating. If we find that there's a line item in the budget that we don't need to, you know, purchase that next year, we eliminate it. If we find that a need has just arisen for, say, special ed or transportation, we add. Those types of discussions are constantly happening within administration, and they communicate with the business office to make those changes. So we also are going to monitor trends. Pretty soon, we'll be able to have the April report out to you as soon as bank accounts are reconciled and revenues posted. You'll also be able to monitor those trends because you'll have the report in your hand. We'll solicit feedback. This budget has to be posted for 30 days to the public. We'll work on the general fund budget. And then June, I forget the exact date, but it's the middle of June, you have a meeting scheduled?
13th.
The 15th?
13th.
13th. And you will, you'll have the opportunity to vote on the general fund budget. Does anyone have any questions for me?
All right, I got a couple.
Okay.
Fund balance. What are we looking at currently? What are we looking at ending for this one?
So as I was kind of inferring, you're about four million to the good-ish this year. Now, that's caveats.
Because it looks like about five million from the report that I was looking at.
I don't doubt that you'd be somewhere in that range. Now, spending for the rest of the year matters, but the trend, you know, is in that range.
When you say spending for the rest of the year, you mean like our capital projects?
No, I mean, stimulus-related.
Right.
Any major purchases that you may make, anything that would sway, any maybe special ed placement on the IU, any major line item. But, you know, so, yes, it would appear, based on some of those one-time things and some of the things that are breaking your way, you will have a set seven-figure surplus.
And we're going to exhaust the capital fund? Because I didn't see that on there.
This is a general fund discussion. No, I did not.
That doesn't show on here, does it?
No, this is a general fund budget discussion. The capital fund, I believe, last we looked, was around the $3 million range.
Because I remember seeing it on the year before, because I was trying to compare them both side by side.
Okay.
What was the timeline? Like, when did we start work? Like, how much? Because there is like next to no budget meetings here.
Okay.
I used to, we start, Mr. Towne, I had brought this up many months ago. We like to see this process start like February. The fact that this was dropped on us Friday night, days before we're supposed to do this, some of, you know, I culp it myself, I had a crazy weekend, I got here even late. But we can't be dropping budgets Friday night before the vote. Because it's never been done in the seven years I've been here. It's not acceptable to me.
Well, I think we've been discussing, Mr. Yost, and you've been at the meetings, the complications that we've been dealing with. There's been a massive amount of cleanup going all the way back to 2021, allowing, that actually, we're grateful for Jim and Joe, the cleanup that they've done to actually get us a real accurate budget. So now, while this is, this is a preliminary budget, just as Jim expressed, now's the time when we can have more of those budget meetings to determine where the expenses are going to be in there.
Like the closure of Nascar Pet, how much did this affect the budget? How much are we saving by closing Nascar Pet?
So those are costs that are currently being studied. Okay? And obviously, they're not yet reflected in this, but when I talk about monitoring data as it becomes available, that's one of the items that administration's looking at.
I have a question. We have about 30 million dollar debt. I believe bonds, right?
Yes.
You may come doing like seven years, but we're going to have to come up with 30 million dollars? Are we trying to pay that down? Or how does that work?
So your debt advisors sent over the amortization schedule?
29 in June, 29 million and change in June.
Yeah, so it appears it is, it's level payments, kind of like a mortgage. I forget exactly how many years they go out. But I don't see a balloon or anything like that.
That's what I was concerned about. We should have set them on the sound.
I think there was one in the paper recently that had a balloon and variable rate components to it, but I don't believe your advisors set you up with something like that. It appears to be level debt service, traditional.
1.5, 1.8 million, I think, you got.
So if I could point you right to the...
Yeah, I saw it in there.
Oh, okay.
And I thought it was 1.8. It might have been 2.2, but I thought it was 1.8.
Yeah, so debt service, yeah, 2 million 99,000.
But see what I'm saying? That stays the same.
What?
Seven years, we're not going to have to come up with 30 million bucks.
Any other questions for Jim? Thanks, sir.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll be posting that on the website, on our Facebook page, and then if anybody would like a hard copy before you leave, we'll bring those out for you. Do you guys put the lights on or off? So Steve, you're allowed, you're able to connect that now?
Yes, she is.
Another thing I want to add, actually, just to some things that Jim was saying about the budget, some things that we were addressing in this budget. So this budget that we have proposed directly supports our educational needs for curricular support. Some of the things that we're addressing in it are our English language learner population. By adding a position, I'm not sure how we're breaking it down between elementary, middle, and high school, but adding another position to that. Our Director of Curriculum and Instruction is now able to focus on grades K to 8 and not have a split position. That is one of the effects of actually closing the building. Grade level teachers, professional development, and some of the things from a technology standpoint is, we're talking about Promethean Boards, which is actually the one that's in the boardroom. That would be in each room. The Promethean Board is a grant money project, but it is, we do have to include it in the budget. We're trying to foster collaboration between the school district and various stakeholders, such as parents, community organizations, local businesses, to enrich the learning experience and promote community engagement. CTE programs at the high school involve community businesses. And from a curriculum standpoint, we are including teachers, parent educators, parents in planning for the curricular needs as well as behavior support needs. We are staffing our alternative learning center again. We've had a struggle with being able to staff that, which assists us in dealing with some of the behaviors of the students. It's not a program where we're just saying returning the students around or sending the kids out of the district. It's actually turning the students around. It's providing supports that they need so that they can come back into the district and be, have achievement and feel good about themselves. Some of the difficult decisions have been made with resources to achieve efficiency, and that also has to deal with the closing of Nascar Pet. That was a very difficult decision. Trying to create transparency, just as we said, this was an excellent presentation. We've never had anything to that level. And that will be posted on the Facebook and on our website for you all to see. And then, Berry Gary School District is looking for the opportunity to make a difference in our student achievement, in our graduation rates, college readiness, and overall community well-being.
Anybody have any questions? We'll get my question. Move on to buildings and grounds. Brent provided us with his package. Anything additional?
I spoke to Mr. Eisenhower earlier today. There's just a few things he wanted me to mention. The main thing is about the grant application, and you'll see that on the board agenda tonight. There will be four separate applications that we're going to file. One for Salem, one for the middle school, one for the high school, and one for West Burwick. They total a little over 3.8 million dollars. So that's, of course, we would be responsible then for 25% of that. So if we were to get that 3.8, they would give us 75% of that then, if we're successful in the grants. So I do have paperwork here that I'll ask you, if everything goes through, that I'll ask you to sign before you leave, because when I file for the grant, that will have to be uploaded along with a copy of the minutes that you approved it. And when you sign that, you are signing that you agree to the terms of applying for the grant and that also you agree to the 25% match. So like I said, I do have those papers for everybody to sign prior to leaving, as long as everything goes through. And you're going to see on the agenda tonight, the work that we had put out, that we have got a price from KPN, which would be Clark Contractors. They get, the price that they had given us was to do some, put in some doorways in the cafeteria and in a couple, in a spot in the hallway, and do some floorwork. The floorwork, to do the terrazzo flooring, in order to get a company in here this summer, the amount has gone up. So they called me and said, can you just cover our costs? We're not looking to make any money. We just want to cover the cost. And they sent me the actual proposal that the company gave them. And then also, Mr. Michaels could speak to this as well. We had, they talked about, I call it a service windows in the Salem Elementary Bestabule. So when you walk in, there would be a window there that the secretary would be behind. She could slide it open, ask you what you need, gain you entrance to the office, or have you wait in the Bestabule. So we decided to ask this KPN contractor, who are already going to be here doing demolition, they've already been awarded that, so we asked them to give us a change order price for that window, that service window, and for the extra amount to redo the terrazzo floor in the hallway after its demo to fix the broken part. And that, just so you know, that, of course, the amounts that I have you to sign does factor in that change order, but I did bring two papers, just in case it would get voted down by some choice. That's all I have. If anybody has any questions?
Are those the grant and rate?
The resolutions?
Yeah.
Yes, you want them?
Yeah.
Thanks, Brent.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Mrs. Post, anything from CSI U?
Our last meeting was held at Wood Foundation, which is in Sunbury. It wasn't held at the University of New York. They had four or five students come. It was students who were doing poorly in school and wanted to quit. And they had five of them come, two of whom had graduated. I asked if we, or if it was available for us to do, but we'd have to provide the transportation, and that's like an hour and 10 minutes each way. So a kid would be on the bus for two hours and 20 minutes a day. It's not worth it. But it was amazing to see how positive these kids were about school and to think they got there because they hated school. The other thing they had, they held everything for us as a developmental help. And they held the mental health summit at the campus theater in Lewisburg. And what came of it is they're going to have students say what they need. And six things that came from it. They wanted safe spaces in schools to decompress. They wanted less stigma around mental health disorders. Continued suicide prevention training for all school staff, teachers as well. Every student to have their person. Every student needs their person whom they have faith in. And schools are a place of positivity and belonging. And better, more structures for students to get the help they need. And of course, it was all about, you know, mental health, which is primary now, of course. Thank you.
Thank you.
Question, or CSI U, the ballot, this is for all 10 people listed there? Good, done, done. Thank you.
We did not have a policy committee meeting this month, so we had nothing to report. Mr. Hess, do they need to vote?
Unfortunately, I don't. I had to miss the last month's meeting due to a family matter, and I think John was in the same boat as me. The next meeting is going to be next Tuesday, the 21st. I, again, am going to have to miss that one. So if any board member wants to go, please let me know. We'll set you up, go you down there, and have a nice dinner for you.
Thank you. Brings us to the end of our committee of the whole meeting. We'll go right on into the regular meeting. First thing we have is approval of the board minutes from our meeting held 8/8. Were included in the board packet any questions on the minutes? Do you have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Ayes, ayes. Business managers report, we have budgetary transfers. Questions on any of those? Do we get a motion to approve the budgetary transfer? So, second?
Second.
All in favor? Post? Ayes, ayes. Motion to approve our financial reports. So, second?
Second.
All in favor?
I got one question, or basically a statement before. I liked the way it was laid out. I just need probably like one more thing to make it a little bit more easier. Is if we could do like a percentage column, say that we use like, say, 30% of what we budgeted to that point? Like, just add a column for percentages.
Where we are.
Yeah. Other than that, it's very good. Because a lot of times, you said you were limited on time. That's why you won't get, it's like, all right, we're 40% through the year, we're... we're approximately 40% through, okay, we're going.
Second? All in favor? Opposed? Ayes have it. Next we have the monthly bills for approval. Anybody have any questions for the bills?
I got one, is the first one listed, the general fund, that Drew Christian Esquire Board Service Settlement for 11 grand. What's that?
That was a settlement agreement, that's an attorney.
Is that a staff-related settlement?
No.
Okay. I don't remember anything recently, that's why I...
Yes.
Is that from December?
Yes.
Okay. Good enough. And again, that's important.
Any other questions? Do we get a motion to approve the bills?
Motion.
Second? Roll call, please.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Mrs. Kukerla?
Yes.
Mr. Lanning?
Yes.
Mrs. Moyer?
Yes.
Mr. Nesbly?
Yes.
Mrs. Post?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
No.
And Mr. Yost?
Yes. Mrs. Tuchy, do you have anything else?
No.
Brings us to public comment, this will be for agenda items only, three minutes, please state your name and township or borough. Alright, with that, we're gonna move on. Four general items. Anybody have any questions on any of these?
On G2, this is called PCCD grant. What exactly, I never heard about these before that we applied them or anything. What are we actually getting them for, like what are we using them for, and what requirements are we going to have to meet? Trying to find information on them is pretty tough, and what I found online, it seems like there's quite a list of things we're gonna, it's gonna mandate us to do, strings that are attached to this money.
So I emailed you back, I do, I apologize, I forgot, you said you weren't gonna look at it before that. So the 45, 627 is used for the SRO, salary and benefits. The 50,000 safe, safe school security equipment is the elementary door, access exterior doors, and the 40,000 PCCD security equipment, remaining elementary door access and vape detection. We have, I can show you the award notices, I can print this off for you if you stay a little bit afterwards. The SEL portion actually is gone now, it doesn't exist moving forward. All other grants are going to be for the salary, the other grants that we have are for the salary of our mental health worker that we have in the district. But there's a lot to what you're asking, and definitely would be happy to sit down, I just couldn't, you know, from when you sent it, that was like my quick response, and then we can go on further with that. But those requirements that you read, a lot of those are already passed. So we're trying to focus a lot on equipment or structural things.
Yeah.
If you recall before, we used to talk about tiers, you're tier one, tier two, and tier three.
That's actually listed in there, and there was a lot of stuff that didn't seem to, requirements that didn't seem to match anything to do with security. It was more curriculum and things like that.
Yeah, I mean, and it does kind of like that, but, you know, mental health can have an impact on the safety and wellness. But, you know, whether it's just an individual student, or whether it's the student body. From a curricular standpoint, there are some programs to teach staff, students, you know, what to do in the event of a situation.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure we, one time, money wasn't creating a recurring cost for us by something we're mandated to be implementing that we'd be stuck with now.
No, we're definitely super cautious about that. One of the things, though, as we were talking about the surveys, so we sent out the parent survey. Last year, we had sent out a staff survey, but in the fall of this year, we are required to send out a school climate survey. It's conducted by a third party. So they will send out a written one, and then they also have the ability to come in and interview people as well. That will, we requested that for early fall. But I'll be happy to.
Yep, you said a vape detection is something that's in this, that's system Mr. Proof had talked about?
Yeah, it's unfortunate, we do spend, not me personally, but our staff...
They spend a lot of time on...
They spend a lot of time, so it's unfortunate, but we would rather try and get something in there so that, you know, obviously their time can be spent on, I mean...
Other things.
Well, yeah, I mean, you know, security, the notion of security is almost like a negative thing, but there's a lot of positive interactions that come from having those people in our buildings. And if those are more of the direction that we can go eventually, then definitely, by all means, that's the way we want to go. Hope that helps.
Any other questions for the general items? Do we get a motion to approve items one through four?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please, or...
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Post?
Yes.
Mr. Nesbly?
Yes.
Mrs. Moyer?
Yes.
Mr. Lanning?
Yes.
Mrs. Kukerla?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
And Mr. Yost?
Yes.
Academic Affair, we have one item to buy two different sets of textbooks. Any questions on these books? I believe they've been out here in the boardroom for 30 days or more. Do we get a motion to approve purchase of textbooks?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Extracurricular, we have one item to approve two out-of-state field trips. Any questions on either of these? Do we get a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Next we have approval of the Pumbi Montour Votek Budget. This will be a roll call vote.
So moved.
Second? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Kukerla?
Yes.
Mrs. Moyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Post?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Nesbly?
Yes.
Mr. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
And Mr. Yost?
Yes.
Next we have a roll call vote for our own preliminary budget as presented by Mr. Mayor Belli. Any additional questions on that?
We didn't lock down a rate yet, right? An increased percentage?
I don't think we, we're not required to lock that tonight, right?
Perfect.
Tonight doesn't lock us in that.
That's what I'm asking. To be clear, you're not locking in a rate tonight, but also to be clear, there is a 4% in this currently, but you are not locked into that, whatever you vote, you may amend between now and...
Not to exceed, right?
It's go zero to 7.4.
But the actual, actual line item of the budget will not exceed that.
Right, we're, we can't go higher than 4% by voting for this, that's what I'm saying.
I'm not sure what the...
No, we can, we can change it between 0 and a 7.4%. Tonight's vote does not lock in the 4%.
Does it lock it in one way or the other?
No.
I don't believe so.
Do we get a motion to approve that?
I'll make the motion.
Second? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Post?
Yes.
Mr. Nesbly?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
No.
Mrs. Moyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Kukerla?
Yes.
And Mr. Yost?
Yes.
We have four items in buildings and grounds, Brent touched on most of those. Are there any questions? There are no questions, we get a motion to approve.
So moved.
Do we get a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Can I add something? With the approval of tonight's meeting minutes, we will be able to start the process to submit for the paperwork to change the name of Salem Elementary to East, East Berwick. We, part of the upload of the information is, you have to have your approval minutes that we had discussed. So that's, I just wanna make sure everybody understands why the information is still being submitted under Salem Elementary versus devoted upon name change.
Transportationally, we have three items to hire three drivers. Anyone have any questions? There are no questions, we get a motion to approve these drivers?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Rachel, T1 and T3, I approve. T2, I approve.
First 10 personnel items. They're all with one approval. Any questions for any of these items?
Question for P8, what all is that, tail?
Oh.
Rachel, did you scan copies of the document?
Yeah, well, I think so. I mean, like a lion copy of it, that I could fill it up.
We'll wait on that answer.
John, I'm, hey. So on January 13th, 2020, it was approved by the school board. Wellness, served the wellness committee, which is required by our nutrition, part of our food, served food and nutrition program. Seminate information relating to employee health and well-being throughout the district. Coordinate activities for district employees that promotes better health. Develop strength, conditioning, and nutrition programs for student athletes. PIW approved athletic activities. Provide oversight of all strength, conditioning, and nutrition programs for student athletes. Regularly communicate with head coaches in order to develop conditioning programs consistent with the needs of student athletes that are specific to each sport. Maintain active CPR certification, maintain active basic first aid assist. In the updating of maintenance of all wellness-related policies and regulations. And perform other pertinent duties and other, in the area of student athlete and employee wellness that may arise from time to time as assigned by the athletic director.
Good. Was this Post's?
This was not, so Mr. Taylor, last year, I don't know, before December, you had asked about all the stipend positions, and I emailed, I shared a Google Doc, I could share it again. This is one of the positions that we hired one time, and then they maintained the position.
So it's part of her salary?
From a, from a paid standpoint, the stipend positions have been paid as a separate amount.
It's got PCers?
Yeah, it is, it is...
That is part of her salary?
But it's tab, what?
So we have four buildings, it's 4,500, I could see having one of each building.
We've only had...
The lead guy was...
We've only had one for the whole district, cause...
And Mr. Bennett was the coordinator last year, too?
Yes. Actually, it was since 2020 when we started it.
Any other questions on those 10 items? Can we get a motion to approve personnel items one through 10?
I'll make the motion.
Second? All in favor? Opposed?
Yeah, I got no to P8, no to P9.
I have no P8, and I'm abstaining from P9.
Okay, Rachel, roll call the rest of the way.
I'm ready.
Personnel item 11, is approval of Tara Dunn to be elementary assistant principal.
So moved.
Do we get a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Mrs. Kukerla?
Yes.
Mr. Lanning?
Yes.
Mrs. Moyer?
Yes.
Mr. Nesbly?
Yes.
Mrs. Post?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
And Mr. Yost?
Yes.
Personnel item 12, approval of Sue Eisenhower to be elementary assistant principal.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Nesbly?
Yes.
Mr. Lanning?
Yes.
Mrs. Kukerla?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Mrs. Moyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Post?
Yes.
And Mr. Yost?
Yes.
Personnel item 13 is for Colton Sidler to be hired as a secondary math teacher. Do we get a motion for that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Kukerla?
Yes.
Mrs. Moyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Post?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Nesbly?
Yes.
Mr. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
And Mr. Yost?
Yes.
Personnel item 14, approve Brittany Parker, elementary teacher.
Excuse me, I got a question on these. Is he a replacement?
Yes.
Is he already marketed in?
Yes. Yeah, the only one is the ESL team, which Dr. Shopwell has been anxiously asking to, we can post it. I just wanted, so the interview process, we invited any school board members that wanted to come in for that, and involved a teacher, and in some cases, we had some students sit in on some of the interviews.
Okay, so we're personnel item 14, Brittany Parker for elementary teacher. Do we get a motion for that?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Post?
Yes.
Mr. Nesbly?
Yes.
Mrs. Moyer?
Yes.
Mr. Lanning?
Yes.
Mrs. Kukerla?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Yost?
Yes.
Personnel item 15, approve Caleb Ringenberg to be an elementary teacher. Do we get a motion for that? You get a motion for that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call please.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Mrs. Kukerla?
Yes.
Mr. Lanning?
Yes.
Mrs. Moyer?
Yes.
Mr. Neskeplee?
Yes.
Mrs. Post? Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Yost?
Yes.
Personnel item sixteen, approve Grace Potter as an elementary teacher. Motion please.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
Roll call please.
Mrs. Kukerla?
Yes.
Mr. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Neskeplee?
Yes.
Mrs. Moyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Post?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Yost?
Yes.
Personnel item seventeen, approve Amanda McCalupo as an elementary teacher. Get a motion please.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call please.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Neskeplee?
Yes.
Mr. Lanning?
Yes.
Mrs. Kukerla?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Mrs. Moyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Post?
Yes.
Mr. Yost?
Yes.
Personnel item eighteen, approve Adam Coker as a special education teacher.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call please.
Mrs. Kukerla?
Yes.
Mrs. Moyer?
Yes.
Mr. Neskeplee?
Yes.
Mrs. Post?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
No, because of the stuff.
And Mr. Yost?
Yes.
Anybody have any new business? Anybody have any new business?
I wanted to just ask everybody's thoughts on having some type of comprehensive strategic planning session as a board with some admin and educators to see if that's something we can coordinate over the next couple of months. Uh, the hope would be that we gel as a unit, but also develop some type of long-term vision, clear lines of strategic communication, and just improve the overall quality of what we're trying to do on a daily basis.
How many meetings you're thinking?
Lots. Just kidding. I don't know, I'm just starting out there for conversation, see if we can get a facilitator to come through and kind of guide us through that planning process and help with the conversation.
I guess we could start at one and go from there.
We could start at one.
I don't have... I'm not opposed to that. Anybody else have any feedback on that either, or any thoughts?
Anybody else opposed, or?
Is that something academic affairs or what, the administration?
You talk about it.
Anybody else have any new business? All right, last round of public comment. Three minutes, please state your name and township or borough.
Hi, my name is Lauren Miller, I am from Hollenbach Township, and I serve a girl in a role. I'm here to present a curriculum that I believe that this school district needs, and it's for healthy relationship training. So no matter how much money we save, or how much money we are paying off our debt, I believe we are not going to be successful unless we have healthy relationships. And this curriculum is absolutely golden, everyone should be implementing this. Um, I'm certified to present it to middle school, high school boards like yourselves, organizations, single mothers, which I know we have a lot more single mothers in the school district now, and also college students. I would love to present that to you over the summer sometime, so we can grow and have a healthy relationships. Now, if for some reason, like you're opposed to going through this curriculum, which I'll show to you later, I'm going to use myself as an example. So, right now, in this time, if I was on the school board, I would have probably voted to keep Nescapec open. I also have communicated multiple times, I'm a believer in Jesus Christ, and I believe the word of God is the absolute truth, from Revelations all the way to Genesis, or vice versa. Now, I guarantee there are people in this room who do not agree with that, they have different viewpoints. But I believe, no matter what we believe, we can work together and have healthy relationships and communicate with kindness and love, no matter where we are at. I mean, I believe we all agree, love is patient. Now, this is what I still... So, many Christians usually like to lead their disciples through the Book of John, the Gospels, communicating the love of God. Now, in relation to Nescapec and my heart for Nescapec Elementary School, I would actually lead us through the books of lamentations and Judges, because those books actually communicate the consequences that come onto the land for not obeying God. I know, some of you guys may know this, some of you may not, but I really want to communicate this in regards to our relationships, in case you don't know. So, God loves Burwick, God loves all the people in Burwick. However, unfortunately, we have struggled to talk kind to one another, and be graceful, and like be filled up with love. And unfortunately, there's been a lot of bullying tongues to all the people in Nescapec, river rats, et cetera, et cetera. God can heal this. Right now, I am worried and concerned about closing Nescapec, not just because of the health of the school in regards to... I would never do that with children. However, I really don't see enough water in this jar and soil to be able to continually build healthy relationships with people across the river. So, I want to challenge everyone on the school board again. I don't know if you have a relationship with God, or if you truly voted for God, but I want... I feel peace in my heart to ask you as well to take time to go to the Lord and ask Him, did I really vote for God, or did I vote for man? If you voted to close down Nescapec for a man and not God, I ask you to change your vote. And if you voted to actually keep Nescapec open, but God wants you to close it, I want you to change your vote, because we will reap the consequences on this land if we don't do that. And in regards to that, we need to work on our healthy relationships moving forward, because closing Nescapec is going to burn a lot of bridges in relationships, because we have not planted seeds of love to the people over there. So, thank you. This curriculum is gold, so we can look at it afterwards, but I'll leave that there. Thank you. I almost want to say one last thing. I wanted to give, because God healed my heart, I know it's over three minutes, God healed my heart in regards to relationships this past week, and it was miraculous, like there was so much anger in my heart. And I wanted to give every one of you guys flowers today, with hopes that your relationships can be healed too, because if you don't have healthy relationships, how are you really going to serve well? And you know what some people on the other side of the river said? They said, "You guys don't deserve it." God believes you deserve it, He loves you, but you have to understand, like, relationships are broken. Okay?
Crystal McCalowski in Nescapec, um, my main topic tonight is about the busing. I have been told that the school district may keep Nescapec open in some form. If that's the case, then why don't we keep the busing the same, especially for the middle school, high school students, with the common pickup at Nescapec for the town kids? That way, VOTEC kids can still be dropped off in their normal bus and get the VOTEC bus there like they have been. The town kids are used to walking there, so there won't be any changes there. Now, for the elementary run, I can see where it could be a traffic nightmare, with, you know, parents still driving their kids there to meet the bus, so, um, if you want to keep the bus stops along Second Street and Fourth Street for the elementary, I can see where that would have its benefits. I don't think you need as many as originally proposed, so I'd hope you continue to look at that, to make the busing as efficient as possible for Nescapec over to Salem. And again, I checked PA Megan's law, and there are four offenders within the confines of Nescapec Borough, and one still at the address where one of the proposed bus stops are going to be. So please, continue to look at that Megan's Law website and keep that in consideration for any proposed bus stops that is not at Nescapec Elementary. In addition, parents do need time to plan accordingly for the fall. From my position within the Commonwealth, I can only make adjustments to my work schedule once a quarter. So for July through September, that's going to be in June. So, if I would need to make any adjustments to my work schedule, I would need to know prior to the beginning of the school year. So, just keep that in mind, some parents have set schedules and need time to find alternative care. They don't have the luxury that I do of changing my work schedule throughout the year, it is what it is. So please keep that in mind, and please resolve the busing as soon as possible, and please keep the parents informed, so that we can plan accordingly. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Lauren, seen in Nescapec Borough. Six hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars you approved for kitchen equipment. Is that district-wide, or is that one school, or what's for? Nobody really made a point on what it was for.
It's for all four buildings, it's for Salem, or East Burwick, whatever it may be called, the middle school, the high school, and West Burwick.
Would it be possible to take the kitchen equipment from the Nescapec Elementary School, recondition it, and use that to reduce the cost?
With what's not in good condition at the schools, and sizing and BTUs, they won't work. We did investigate that, and some of the equipment that would be big enough to come over isn't in the greatest shape at Nescapec.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Should we explain the funding of that a little bit?
Yeah, the funding account is actually, for lack of a better term, we call it the cafeteria account. So, the reimbursable amount that we have for everybody in our district that's free and reduced, so our whole district is identified as that, but the money that comes into the school district has to go back into cafeteria money, or back into cafeteria improvements. So that's the account that that's been used for, so it's a federally supportive account.
All right, also on the... I'll say make a comment on Clint's question earlier about the grant for your SRO. That's a grant, and you're going to pay wages and benefits with that, now is that a grant that you get every year, or is that just a one-time grant?
It is, but what we did this year, so we do, we have the grant, and we have the expenditures, or the, like we said, the VAPs and those kinds of things, from tracking purposes, for anybody that writes grants, it's easier to spend it on the salary, and then use the one-time purchase out of our other funds. So it will... It will go back. We're not using it to sustain the salary, we already have the salary in the position. It's for reporting purposes of the grant? I don't know if I explained that well enough. There's certain parts...
I just brought another question, I mean, working with Nescapec's budget, you know, being the mayor, and working with the police department budget in particular, a lot of grants you cannot use for wages or benefits. Grants have to be for, you know, equipment, or, you know, training, or whatever, but you can't... Yes, specific line item, you can't use it for wages.
Correct.
So...
You have to make sure, before you submit the grant, you have to make sure you meet the requirements. They don't, they won't approve it unless you have those line items for exactly what your expenditures are going to be.
Hi, my name is Danielle Pishvol, I'm from Salem Township. Um, I would like to know if we're going to go from five days into four days, if you guys have watched the news. Is that no? Because you've watched the news, and you see that a lot of people, the governor has said that, you know, a lot of school districts can change from five days into four days, and make the hours even longer, you know, for the kids to go to school even longer. You know, that is going to be very hard for the elementary kids, especially kids with disabilities like my child. I would like to know, what are we planning on doing, especially for the kids that have disabilities?
I mean, I'm not trying to stop you, but it's not a conversation that we have. So, it's not in our plans.
Not in your plans, so you're not going to change it from...
Not for this next coming school year.
Good. I'm so glad you said that. Can I have that in writing?
Lucy, put that in writing.
Yes, put that in writing.
It's a piece on it, it will be in the minutes, I'm sure they'll put it in.
Christina Cole for Salem Township. So last week was Teacher Appreciation Week, so I just wanted to thank you to all the teachers. And this may sound crazy to some people in the room, but feel free to raise my taxes and pay our teachers more. Thank you.
Anybody else? So our executive summary, we had some student discipline discussion. Real estate, two grievances, Act Ninety-three agreement discussion, and security purchase discussion. Our next meeting will be here on Thursday, June thirteenth, beginning at five o'clock.
Wednesday is Academic Affairs at five o'clock.
We get a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second?
If anyone wants to, you can print a hard copy of that presentation off, sorry. Yeah.